My own allow it.
It don't sound like it. It don't sound like it.
You should be.
Okay, good. All right, let's get the work session back in order here. It's required by state law, I know most of you have spoke or have left, but we are required to allow for public comment. Is there anyone here present that wishes to address counsel at this time in public comment? The same rules apply as they did in special call, no more than three minutes, please try to wrap up if possible. No bantering back and forth between yourself and counsel. Okay. I've been asked to move up two items, and without objection from counsel, I'd like to move up items thirteen and fourteen. If possible, I'd like to have the presentation from the Military Museum to go first. Barbara moved you up, though.
Somehow, I think my timing could have been better. But I wanted to say, I'm very encouraged with what I've seen here tonight. I thought the residents were very respectful, even though they were not for what the council had voted for, and I thought all of you did really well in listening. I've lived in a few places in my life, and I wish more of you would like this town, and I'm so happy I moved here. So, that being said, I'm with the Military Memorial Museum, and we, the building was built in 1885, for those of you who are not familiar with it. It burned down in 1904. They rebuilt it in 1908, was the, it was the schools, a school for a long time, then the Board of Education. We have run the museum since 2002. Unfortunately, we closed for about a year, because the building was literally falling down, so, as one lady said, "I'm talking about needs, not wants." We bring in about 7,000 people a year who visit the place. A lot of them are people from out of town who spend money here. The fourth graders come every year, they're a lot of fun to entertain. The building is now supported, and will be around for another hundred years or better. It's well, it's well done. The, the current need we have a grant for is the roof is finished. It's not just the roofing material, it's the support for the roof, so that's going to be taken care of. And I, I gave you, I hope you have this litany of the construction we have for that particular area, and I wanted to show you, the second page was the layout. If you look at, I cross out an elevator, that would have cost a million dollars. What, what we did to cross it out is we, we talked to other museums, and since we are a historical area, we do not have to build this elevator. To comply with ADA, what we need to do, if we put any exhibits upstairs, we need to photograph them and describe them and be able to show people downstairs who can't, are not able-bodied enough to climb up. But we do have to put a fire escape to have a second means of egress up there before we can open up to the public. What, if you take note on there, it says, "First floor HVAC," and on, on two sides of that structure, that is what you all gave us money for last year. Somebody, for some reason, put those units right in the middle of the rooms, which meant the rooms couldn't be used. So, what, what you guys gave us was the money to move them to the side, and we redid the duck work, and that also improved the airflow. So, what we're asking for today is HVAC for the second floor, which there is none. There's no heating or ventilation, and we have a real problem with mold up there, and we have about 300 uniforms that have been donated that eventually will show, but they have to be put in storage, and we have to constantly watch for mold. So, that is the one section of, of that budget we're looking for, and I did put the fire escape in there, so you could see, the last page was what the fire escape proposal looks like when that, when that gets done. So, the entire project is 393, 393,000. We've got 300,000, so we're a little short, but what we're requesting is if you would contribute again to that second floor air conditioning, like you did the first floor air conditioning, for $21,000, and that would help us control that space and save artifacts. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Just to clarify, the, the bottom number here, the 393, is that after you've taken out the 300, or should I assume that there's only 93,000?
What we have is 300,000, and that's, what we need is 393 in order to finish the second floor project. The biggest number in that after the roof, and, and the roof, again, is not just shingles or, or, it's rafters. The roof has to be ripped off and put on from scratch. But the fire escape is fairly pricey, $125,000. Everything else is, is sort of normal, you know, sheet rock, HVAC, the windows is the next biggest expense. We're putting in for a grant for the windows also.
That was my second question. Would the remainder of this amount, are you asking county, state?
Oh, yeah. We're, we're going for all that. The line share of this money has come from two sources, the state and the county contributed quite a bit, and you all contributed. We, we also got a federal grant, this is for stage one, but the windows downstairs were like $6,000 a pop. We won't have to put that quality of window up there, but those things, those windows protect the artifacts, and if you look at things like our uniforms, we had a German uniform, it's gray on one side, it was white on the other, just from the sun.
Yeah.
So, you know, the sun destroys a lot of things, so we're real protected downstairs. And if you haven't gone to the museum in a long time, I invite you to come, I think you'll be impressed with what we did. Recently, we had Milo Lembret's Medal of Honor on display, and we're having more people, and I guess because we've been closed for a year, we're seeing a, an uptick, an uptick in the, in the people coming to the museum. Just for those two days, we had over 200 people come to look at the medal, and the medal hadn't been here for 100 years. We sort of had to twist a little arms to get it. They thought we were like, kind of an insignificant museum, we said, "You know, the man's buried here, this is his hometown, don't you think we should have the medal?" And then we had to put a little more money into insurance. I don't know who would steal the medal, but it had to be insured for $250,000.
I wonder about that, if you had to do, to do security at all?
We, we have, the place's got security in it, but we also got a special case for it, so that you couldn't touch it, and we pretty much, the police were advised, and they were, they were doing a real good job of making sure the building was good on the outside. And I know they come quick, because I, I put the wrong code in one day, they came real quick to check me out.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll just say, I'd, I'd been doing, I haven't this year, but I've been doing the fourth grade walking tours for years, and the, it is a nice, a nice asset in Crossville, in, in Cumberland County. The, you know, I, I, I know that everybody seems to enjoy it every time, and I enjoy it as well, so.
Any other questions? So, what's kind of your, your thought process on, on when you would think you would need this money? Because I think counsel would need to probably further discuss things.
As soon as we can, the roof is going out, is, we already selected a contractor, and we had to select an engineer, because the roof is pretty complicated, so we need a professional engineer to certify that the contractor's doing his job. I'm supposed to sign those documents this week, and then they'll start on the roof, and probably HVAC thing, I've talked to the mechanics, they'd like to start getting the duck work in the ceiling as soon as they can. They don't care if the rest of it gets done, but they'd like to at some point. So, the roof will be first, the HVAC will be second, and then everything else sort of comes after that.
Okay. All right, counsel, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
You're doing a great job, looks, looks beautiful. Now, counsel, what do we want to do with this? Are you wanting to chew on a little bit, we can move to the next month's meeting, or you want to put it on? What do you all want to do? Because if I put it on the, on the agenda?
We'll have to vote for it.
You'll vote for it, and there will be a budget amendment, so I didn't know if you all were ready, if you guys want to hold and chew on a little bit?
Chew.
Chew?
You put it for October, is it, I mean, November? Is that okay? For November meeting?
So, let's, let's, can we just bounce it to next month, give it away a chance? And if you've not been to the Military Museum?
I have, I live, yeah.
Have you been since it's been open?
It's awesome.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next up, discussion regarding request from DCI. You taking that, CJ?
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Jowick with Downtown Crossville, Inc. I'm sure many of you have noticed the improvements to the Veterans Memorial Park. Downtown Crossville has partnered with Cumberland County to achieve what we have done so far, which is the Bronze Eagle and the Veterans Memorial Arch that we have put there. Because of the tariffs and so forth that have been imposed, we have been able to raise so far $47,100, which DCI has raised. The current cost so far to us for the arch and the eagle, the pillars and so forth, are DCI would like to request from the City of Crossville, $5,000 to try and level out the expenses where we are now. We have many people that are coming forward to give us donations and so forth, and there are multiple phases that we are trying to do at the park. One, making the front entrance ADA compliant, creating a wall of honor, upgrading the court of flags.
Okay. You all have any questions for CJ?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's.
You gonna have a fountain around the eagle, or what's, what's in the?
No, sir, around the bottom of the eagle, we plan to put bronze, Star Medal recipients, some kind of plaque or so forth.
Oh, okay.
Because the eagle is bronze.
That's great. That's cool.
Counsel, what do you all want to do, since it's at the $5,000 threshold, we have budgeted for it, would not require a budget amendment, correct?
We have special events that we can take it off.
So, I'm not saying we gotta do this, but you all could go in that direction, it will avoid the extra readings and all that stuff, but it's up to you, you're gonna be doing the meeting next week.
That's, yeah, I'm all for it.
So, it's budgeted, correct?
We have a, what's the term, a $5,000?
There's, there's room to cover it, it's a category.
And it was 5,000?
We have 5,000, we have setback in our, in our.
Hotel.
Hotel motel, that wouldn't require a budget amendment. So, it's up to you all, do you, if you want to go that direction, we can put it on the agenda, if not, give me guidance.
Put it on the agenda.
Okay, put that on the agenda, so.
Thank you.
Requesting for 5K from DCI. Okay. You good, Benny? Okay, all right. All right, we'll now go to action item number two, discussion regarding E-911 Dispatch and Call Time Review. I'd like to ask Mr. Eric Ritzman to come up. This is per my request, because of, obviously, the conversation that we had all day today, I think it's relative to be aware of some of the numbers. So, if you don't mind, kind of, just, obviously, I know who you are, but state, ER?
I'm Eric Ritzman, Executive Director of Cumberland County 911, and Vice Chair of the Tennessee Emergency Communications Board.
Okay, is that State Board, or is that?
State Board.
Okay, all right. Can you give us kind of a rough idea what our call times are in regards to whatever information you have?
I can. We don't separate them out, city versus county, so I can give you an average for the entire county, and I have that for the last three years, 23, 24, and year-to-date. Those are, it's 10.2 minutes, 10.4, and 10.5 minutes averaged out across the entire county, city and county.
So, I'm, I'm, so when I call to when the first person shows up, is that what that number is you're doing?
It is, yes.
Okay. And that's calculated how? By software, or is it something?
It is calculated by our dispatch software.
Okay, so it's an independent party that can verify that, right, okay. Some of the things I didn't realize is, can you, can you kind of walk me through this difference between E-911 and Dispatch?
Yeah, E-911, which is the service that 911 is required to provide, is the call-taking portion of that, so when you pick up your phone, dial 911, that is that portion. The dispatch portion is what we contract with the city and the county to provide for additional funding, but it is completely separate. Not all 911 districts provide city and county dispatch, some do for one, some do for other. We do believe, however, that it is the best way, and is the gold standard for doing dispatch, is for those services to be combined into one entity.
I know in the process of all this, I figured, I found out that there are four dispatchers on?
Six during the days, four at night.
The reality is, though, you have half that are for county, and half that are for city, and then there's crossover?
Right, there's crossover. We, so, like, if you look at a day shift, we always have an EMS dispatcher, we always have a county law enforcement dispatcher, and a city law enforcement dispatcher, those are our three busiest stations. The other one is call-take and then fire, because they are not as busy. The EMS dispatcher handles the calls that go to city fire, also for their EMR response. During the days, when it's, when that is, when there's more traffic, that is two call-takers and then three or four dispatchers, depending on how the load is divided up, and then they all cross over and handle each other's stuff as necessary.
What's kind of the, in this area, what's like a good, considered a good time? I know you said ours is somewhere around 10.
Yeah, I polled the surrounding counties and had five reply, and the average for those five was 10.85 minutes response time.
I didn't hear the last part, sorry.
Of the five counties that replied, when I asked them what their EMS response times, the average was 10.85 minutes.
Okay. But now, you serve on that State Board, right?
I do.
So, I mean, is, is that, I mean, I don't do this, it's 10 minutes, pretty average, above average?
I do not know. Yeah, I don't know, those aren't numbers that are usually reported to us.
Okay. Well, the reason why I was asking, because I, when I contacted Mount Juliet, spoke with Chief Folks there, as well as the Martin, Tennessee, the reason why they moved forward with their city-based EMS is because they were having up to 30 minutes plus, and so that's why I was trying to figure out what the times were.
So, you can't say this is what the city fires, this, uh, response time is for first responder call or fire or rec or anything, you can't?
Yes, I can tell you what city, I could, if I had ran those numbers, tell you what city fires' response times are. I cannot tell you what EMS's response times are in the city.
Well, the city fires, not 10 minutes.
Versus the EMS response times in the county, because this is an average.
Yeah, we saw that for EMS, I didn't know you wanted fire, you wanted him to get fired?
Well, you're saying, you know, this is a 10-minute response time, when, when the city, when dispatch tones out a medical call, I'm assuming they push one button, it's EMS, city fire, and police if needed, and whoever gets there first is, what I'm saying, I'd like to know what the city fires, we can find that out, response time is, not being derogatory about anybody, but what's their time, what's city police, city, or county?
Yeah, I can get you CFD's times, I, I suspect that the ambulance service probably has, or they can break down their times better than we can break them down, so.
Well, I think our chief can break down our times.
I have those.
What's our average response time, four minutes?
I have those, but if I may, a city fire response vehicle leaving station one on an EMS call, average response time, four minutes 23 seconds. Leaving station two is an average of four minutes 27 seconds, for a total average across the city of four minutes 25 seconds, and that's reproducible from the ESO software.
That's good information, I mean, we need to know all of that.
Sure, sure, that's what we're pointing to conversation, so.
County and the city, the, is EMS in the cities, I've been told, I think it's seven, is that correct, ballpark?
I don't know.
Well, EMS is gonna be.
It's not 10, it's not, I know it's less than 10.
EMS is gonna be pretty close to city fire in the city, you know, so.
Well, that's why you did the whole first responder program, right?
Yeah.
So, any other questions? Now, where did you pull that from?
From city fire department, ESO dispatch software.
Okay, that's reproduct. So, is that under the umbrella of you, or is that something separate?
Whenever we close out, or whenever we start a call that goes to one of the fire services, it sends an alert into their software, and when that call closes out, their software pulls all of that in, and then calculates their times for them.
And that's just to keep time? Do you still go off what they say to you, right, when you go to call?
It's.
Yes, it's the same time.
It's the same time.
That's our reporting, wherever we're at.
Any other, any other questions? I think, so, if you can, obviously, he's got that, but just, let's make sure we are on the same page.
Okay.
And you had sent this to me when I'd seen you last, what, what is this? Is this part of that, is that part of your state thing? What is this thing?
That is Cumberland County, let's say Cumberland County 911 thing, we do a annual report for all of our agencies. That's closeout of every year. That one was city fires, it was not picked up.
At what? What is it?
It's an annual report, it's what we put out to all of our partner agencies that, you know, shows their call volume, the amount of calls they went on, call count, so it says for each type of call you went on, you were dispatched for, you know, however many number of calls for that, shows their top complaint codes.
Okay.
It's just, just a year in review.
So, Eric, did you say that, do you think that E-911 Dispatch and communications should be brought together?
They are, here, they are in most places.
But not as far as budgeting?
Yeah.
Well, okay, the city pays so much a year to dispatch for?
Yes.
About a half a million dollars.
Half a million dollars, okay.
And that is considered the gold standard, and that's what we encourage at a state level, is for the city and counties to contribute to the operations of dispatch, and for those 911 centers to run those, that dispatch operation.
Okay, any other questions?
But your E-911 Board is, is, their money is brought in through phone, the cellphone bills, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, we.
I didn't state that correctly.
Okay. Okay, any other, anything else to report?
No.
All right, thank you. I forgot to mention Randy Davis, who had spoke earlier, was the first one, he couldn't speak, he had another meeting, so we'll move now into action item number three. Give me a second to pull this up. I can have Chris Miller come up, I've got a couple of questions. I know who you are, but not everybody does, can you just state who you are and what you do?
Chris Miller, Cumberland County EMS Director.
Okay, Chris. So, obviously, you all have heard a lot of conversation today, can you just give me a rough breakdown on the ambulance situation in regards to the mechanics? How many do you have, what's your staffing, what happens when there's a, too much going on? Like, what, what can you share with, with how it works, if I were here?
Well, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that goes into EMS, as we all know, as we've all heard tonight. We have, during the day, we have usually between eight and 10 trucks, usually 10, we have scattered throughout the county, obviously. Usually the way it works is we've got three ALS trucks in the city, two at station one, which is down here behind Shaddens', and we've got another one that is on the north side of the city, on Genesis Road, just the other side of Buc-Ee's, at a fire station out there. We also have a BLS truck that is at station one, we also have two trucks at Fairfield, usually ALS and a BLS truck at Fairfield, we have one at Lake Tansy, one at Platah Road, one at Crab Orchard, and one at Pleasant Hill.
How many BLS units, Chief, do you have total? BLS?
Uh, where were you? We have got two designated BLS trucks.
Two, for the whole, for the whole county?
We've got one BLS truck, as I said, in Fairfield, and we've got a BLS truck that is stationed down here at station one.
Right.
For a lot of, they're generally for hospital discharges and doctor's appointment inside the city, so that's generally what they're used for.
That's basic life.
BLS, and usually what that is, is two EMTs, what we refer to, and people that are not familiar with how, what those letters mean.
Yeah.
When you say ALS, that's usually a paramedic, got at least a paramedic on it, then BLS will have any combination of two A, advanced EMTs, as well as maybe an AMT and a basic EMT, is generally the way it runs. And as I've stated before in the past, in, in some meetings that we've been at, the way we generally do it is if we get down to one truck inside the city, you know, obviously, our call volume, call volume inside the city is where our largest call volume is, as we all know that. Usually, when we get down to one truck, we will call a 10-8 truck, what we refer to as a 10-8 truck from a substation, and to assist with calls. And so, just kind of give you, and, you know, and that, that goes, if they get a call, we pull another one 10-8, if they get a call, we pull another one 10-8. So, that's basically how EMS works, as far as.
Just like the coordination of care, so if you guys are swamped, just in a full moon, perfect storm, and you get down to where all you have left is a BLS?
Right.
Right, I mean, should the quality be expected less, should there be a concern in regards to the ability for that, that, that crew, I don't have a technical term, sorry, but, you know.
Well, I mean, yeah, there, there are occasions when we get, you know, just like in city of Crossville, I mean, you know, bad things happen, you know, people don't, you know, something that my employees, that we, we refer to a lot, a lot, is we have to prepare for, do our best to prepare for worst-case scenario, which sometimes you can prepare as much as you want, and you still get, you know, you still don't have enough. We could have 10 trucks on the road, there's been times when we've had 10 trucks, 10 trucks on the road, and we've got 10 calls and maybe one or two waiting. That's very rare, but it does happen. You know, you can have anything of, but as far as when a, a, an advanced EMT truck, if it's what we would refer, refer to as a BLS truck, it's still, we allow our AEMTs to operate at the very tip-top of what they are allowed to do by the state of Tennessee, and they're very, there used to be a pretty, and Brian can speak more of this than I can, there used to be a pretty, pretty big drop in as far as level of care, that is not as such anymore. The levels of AMT care has really, really progressed due to the shortage of paramedics, that is, I mean, it's not just statewide, it's not region-wide, it's nationwide, so, so, you know.
Why is the shortage, Chief? I mean, is there a reason?
That's a good question. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. We've had, me and Brian have been in on several meetings, we've tried, they've tried several different things. The state of Tennessee has tried to streamline a lot of, a lot of training, try to speed it up, try to do different things, they've done everything from street to paramedic and, you know, try to shorten the amount of time, I don't know what the shortage is, I, that is, you know, that, we are not, that has become the norm of, there's a lot more advanced EMTs that are, that are running emergency calls than ever before. When I came here, we, we had a few double medic trucks, that's just a thing of the past. There are no, and I, and I think I can say this with all certainty, there is no, not 911 services in the, in the upper Cumberland that run, that does not run a few, at least a couple or a few, maybe even, of what we refer to as BLS trucks. It's just, that's the way it is, so.
I know you brought that up, a good, my good friend, the county mayor, Randy Porter, I think, shared with me that they have three or four BLSs, they've?
They have, they run, during the day, they run 12 trucks, four of those are BLS trucks.
And this is a large populous county?
Yeah, that's in Putnam County, that's in Putnam County.
Okay. I guess I, what I want to bring up to is that, I know there's been a lot of conversation about just, this, there seems to be some type of disconnect when a higher-level provider gets on to the BLS, and this aspect of abandonment or whatever.
Right.
And, you know, I'm a chiropractor, I don't, I don't obviously do what you all do, but on a very basic level, you know, there's coordination of care, right?
Right.
In my level, I'll hand off to somebody that's going to have the higher-level care if I can't help them out, right? So, in this situation, where in, in the city, we have paramedics, right?
Right.
That potentially could get there before?
Right.
Your crew gets there. Walk through me how that's supposed to work, because I know, I know Dr. Wojcik's here, but you obviously are, as the director, there's, there's a process.
Right.
Right, and so, ideally, in a perfect world, how is that process supposed to go?
Well, I mean, ideally, and there's been some, some misunderstandings or some, I'll say, some inaccuracies as far as what abandonment truly means. If an, if a paramedic from, say, from city fire responds, just because they're on the scene, if they do not initiate care and do something that is above an AMT scope of practice, they can turn that over to an advanced EMT for them to transport to the hospital. That is, we've had city fire personnel that have said, "No, that's, that's not true, we've been told otherwise, we have to ride in with you," and that's not the case. If.
Why would they say that if it's not the case? What's the law, Chief?
That is the law, is as long as the paramedic does not do something that is above an AMT scope of practice, they can turn that over to an AMT for transport to the hospital.
You testify to that?
Yes, well, that's the state of Tennessee consultant right there.
So, let me, look, can you just, again, hypothetical, can you give me a scenario where that happens?
Well, I mean, now, if city, like, if city fire paramedic was to respond, and they do an intubation, or they synchronize cardio, and I know I'm speaking some medical terms, but they cardiovert, they shock a patient, get their heart back in rhythm, if they turn that over to an AMT, and there's other things that's involved in that as well.
Sure.
They can't turn that over to an AMT and say, "Yeah, you're good to go," you cannot do that.
If that situation, they hop on?
They have, they should get on the truck and ride to the hospital with us, yes.
But if I'm in, if I'm in the parking lot.
If you're stable, yeah, and.
My legs go out from underneath me, and I, my sugar's low.
Right.
Whatever. I mean, then the paramedic gets there from the fire, they don't have to ride along?
No.
They can go on along, okay.
So that's just for intubation or CPR, or shock?
Well, Brian could probably speak as far as everything across the board, but there are very few skills that a paramedic can do, and not now in the State of Tennessee, that an AMT can't do, as far, just like even pain medications and such. You know, and I can read to you guys what, what, in the State of Tennessee, what AEMTs, a lot of the skills, a lot of people don't know that they can even do, that we have, you know, like I said, if the State of Tennessee says that we are, that they are capable of doing it for the safety and for the well-being of citizens of Cumberland County and citizens of Crossville, we're, we, we want them to be able to do that. And I've got that list of medications here, and lots, some skills that they can do, that a lot of people don't even know that they can do.
I think I'm ball-hogging. Mike, are you, you and I seem to ball-hog, anyone else want to ask a question?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it seems to me like, let me ask, I'm gonna just, one more statement, it seems to me like that everybody's got to be on the same page here.
Hundred percent.
Not two pages. So, so if, if the Crossville paramedics, they need to be provided with a list or whatever saying, this is what you can turn over to the A, advanced EMT, and this is what, you need to stay with us, that needs to happen now.
Well, we, well, and I.
Do you not have training, cross-training between the?
We, well, and I can kind of hit on both of those, we have tried.
Well, I can say, James, that Crossfire Department has as high of training, as high as in their research as Cumberland County does.
Okay, but I will say that we have updated a lot of protocols that they are not familiar with, because they will not come.
If they're not operating on the same page, maybe they'll get together with us.
Because they will not come and train with us. They have, they have been given a copy of the protocols, and they will not come and train with us.
So you're saying, on this certain protocol, they need to come to you, they need to come to your department to catch up on it?
Medical director, medical director wants them to, and he has went and talked to them and asked them to come and train with us. We, I mean, that's, and a lot of that is for cohesiveness, and have, where we're on the same page, and we can train together.
But you're not saying that Crossville paramedics has to come to EMS for all their research numbers?
No, we, we, we invite them, we invite them to every training that we have, and we've said, we will come to you. Dr. Wojcicki, I believe, can attest to that, he's said that they, he will come over and help them train. Am I speaking accurately on that?
Oh, I didn't know he was here.
Yep.
So it's been simulated in the past that the Crossville paramedics refuse to come to training, and that's not, that's not everything to that. It's like they refuse to get any training, it's what it sounded.
No, 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 no. I, I have no doubt that they're doing the proper training, but there has been protocols that we have changed since we changed medical directors, that they need to be, because the way, the way it's supposed to work for first responder goes, is if a City Fire paramedic responds to that situation where we have an AMT on a truck, two AEMTs on a truck, they need to be proficient in every medication that we have on that truck.
Well, first, yeah, okay. First responders started about 25 years ago, and I think it's saved, saved lives. So are you saying at any point that Cumberland County EMS may not need first responders anymore, that program?
I would, I would never say that, and I would agree with you, they've done, Cross City Fire has done a lot of good things. I think there is a disconnect.
Well, a lot of people thinks on a heart attack or whatever, trauma, a couple of people, you got a driver and a, and a medic, and that's, it takes as much people as emergency room sometime to handle a trauma patient, and in my opinion, they're all understaffed.
Just burnout, man, stuff.
Well, burnout, I've been, my career, I've burned out four or five times in my career, so, but always came back.
But it's, but, but something else I wanted to touch on before, before we move on is, you know, we, you know, we talk about some response times, you know, like I said, you know, we, you know, as I say, Cumberland County's growing, but, you know, we've, we've maintained, you know, like Director Rithman said, we've maintained a 10-minute response time county-wide, and, and we all know how bad Cumberland County is. So, you know, that's, that's a testament of, you know, the dedication that we have to our, to our craft, you know, so, I just wanted, wanted to say that, so.
Well, I would hope if you ever didn't need the first responder program, that you would say, hey, we don't need this anymore, we're in good shape, we as a organization has got this covered.
No, I would, I would never, I would never say that, but I, I think there has been a, an obvious divide in the last few years between us and City Fire. I mean, I, I'll be the first one to say that, and it's not nothing that I prefer. I would prefer it being cordial and on the same page, because it's about the citizens in this area, county and city, that we provide services for. And when you have the disconnect, it's not me or you one that's going to suffer, more than likely, it's going to be the citizen out here that's going to suffer when there's a disconnect, and there is a disconnect.
You and then Councilman Fox, I know you've got a question.
Do you know ahead of time when you're going to be discussing protocol changes in the trainings?
Yeah.
It would be nice if you could specify, we're going to be discussing protocol changes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we'll, we give, when we.
The manager needs to know it.
Yeah, well, we, I think we include you on when we do, when we do a lot of the training.
It's just a flyer saying this is the training, so if you could.
Yeah, okay, all right. We, no problem, I'll, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Just a few questions and a couple of comments, just four easy questions, I think. Do you agree that one of the major determinants of patient or victim outcome is the tie between event and initiation of treatment?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you agree that if resources are available, and it, it's deemed to be an emergency-type situation, based on whatever information you're given, that the highest-trained resource should be sent to that call?
Yeah, I will agree with that, but I will, can I add something to that?
Huh?
Is, I also believe that it is, that it is imperative that whoever the person is responding, operate to their skill level.
Sure, that's what I said.
Okay.
If resources are available and the call comes in as described as an emergency, the equipment and the information you get from dispatch is deemed as an emergency, then you should send your highest level of available resource to that.
Yes.
Okay. Do you agree that determining a patient's victim, a patient or victim's stability, or their potential for deterioration, is a non-exact science? That there's no field test to predict what patients may deteriorate? Do you agree or disagree with that?
Uh, there's a lot of variables in that, I can't really give you a definitive answer.
Just one question, you're right, there's a lot of variables in patients, but do you agree that patients' prediction of whether they're stable or they're going to deteriorate is a non-exact science?
It can change.
Okay. And last question, do you agree that paramedics licensed in Tennessee are the highest level of EMS-recognized pre-hospital provider, and that they have a different set of training, skills, and knowledge than the other providers?
No, I don't agree with, critical care, critical care is the highest level.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a.
That's a licensure, no, that's a licensure.
But, okay, then, critical care, even better. Do you agree that they're the highest level of?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, good. Now, last comment is, I've got, and, and, you know, I take a different approach to the patient abandonment, I just feel obliged, since you made your comments about that, to throw this in. Just because a provider shows up and does not actively touch or do a skill, if they're there on the scene, and have engaged a patient, and they have a provider con, uh, interaction, they have some responsibility for that patient. And the, the, I've got, I've got six textbooks, including the one that's being used to teach the current paramedic class that defines abandonment, different than you do. So I would never encourage a provider, if someone's going to err, I would always err on the side of accompanying that patient that I've engaged with, and whether I've intubated or cardioverted, for those patients that we can't predict that are going to deteriorate. So I certainly understand the city paramedics' feeling that they should accompany that patient, and in that way, they can, that, that potential for impropriety and allegation of abandonment can never come up.
Okay, well, and I'll, and I will respond to that with what I said previously, is which is, which is better, or which is more the best way to handle, with an AMT, advanced EMT operating to the top of their capability and doing everything, or a paramedic that does nothing?
Legally or practically? What you talking about?
Either or.
If, if legally, if a paramedic engages a patient, they need to make sure that they're not going to deteriorate.
Okay.
I think we've established you can't do that.
All right.
If we, since we're obviously, the vote had happened today, we'll probably need to have some subsequent conversation to dig a little deeper. I think this gives us a good idea.
Yeah.
If Council is okay with that, I think in the next few months or so, we'll have him come back, or maybe at our, at the retreat.
I'd like to retreat.
But will you all do me a favor, though? If you have questions and everything else, can we get those to the city manager, so Chris has prepared for any and all hypotheticals that we do?
I think a lot of it will be cleared up, Mayor, by just telling the city manager, this is our rules, this is what law is, and then.
Yeah, I'm just telling you about, like, to try to get where some of you all want to go, I think it's, it's important to have a conversation. Thank you.
You're welcome, appreciate it. Thank you.
And so we'll go right into the, to the next fella. He tried to speak earlier, and I went and let him, so, and he's been nice enough to be here on a late night. Brian Tompkins, you are a state consultant with state EMS, is that fair to say? Just hold your thunder, buddy, if you'll.
Good evening, my name's Brian Tompkins, Tennessee Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services. I serve as the consultant and investigator for the upper Cumberland region. I'll start tonight for apologizing. First of all, the young man asked me to fill out the form, so I filled out the form, I was just being compliant. I do hold tonight a debt of gratitude to Crossville City Fire. They gave my son-in-law his start in firefighting, and was well-trained there, appreciate that. And I will also speak to the fact that, over the course of Director Miller's career, and Dr. Fox could speak to this, when he first took the ambulance service in Cumberland County, it was in quite disrepair, many deficiencies, and they have been brought up to state minimum standards and beyond that in the last seven or so years, so. What other questions would you like for me to attempt to answer tonight?
So obviously, the, the conversation is about things that we need to be prepared for as a council as we move forward, if we decide to move forward, on being prepared to do this. And I know in some of the conversations that I think we've had briefly, it was about things to consider. I know we have some special cases, we have a, a, a community that requires a special type of certification with, was it, is it trach, or what is it, what is it that you said?
So, the City of Crossville has the only vent-wing nursing home in the upper Cumberland, so any ambulance service responding there would need to take into consideration the need for ventilators and vent-trained paramedics, critical care paramedics. That is a thought going forward that you all would need to consider if you began to do those transports. Relatively standard for most ambulance services.
I know you mentioned that this whole process would make us a primary emergency provider, or that's a conversation we need to figure out?
Mm-hmm.
Because there's different levels, I don't think Council completely understands that. I know it's going to be brought up later today, but there are different levels that we can take on, right, as a, as a?
Yes.
As a ambulance provider within the city, and those require different agreements with county EMS, that's different things that we have to do, right?
Yes, so, state EMS rule 1200-12-01, section .14, addresses types of ambulance services. From the conversations held here tonight, that was, the City of Crossville would want to apply for a primary emergency provider. That would then allow the City of Crossville to have medical direction over all healthcare providers with underneath that umbrella, whereas currently, as the state rule in .16, referring to first responders, that medical direction has to come from the primary, primary 911 provider within the geographical area, which currently is the Cumberland County EMS agency. I believe very much so that that is, seems to be, from the conversations and the questions that have come from Council, that seems to be the hot topic. The medical director for Cumberland County EMS drives that care. You all have a memorandum of understanding with Cumberland County EMS that dictates that. That memorandum of understanding also dictates that the responding ambulance takes the responsibility for the transport of that patient, not Crossville City Fire and the decision-making for that. It does not list a level of licensure for that. That is something this Council needs to look at. By the problems that you addressed and Dr. Fox addressed, that would need to be addressed with Cumberland County EMS, if there needs to be changes in that memorandum of understanding. If you apply for a primary emergency provider, under the essential service, TCA code 7-61-102, something you need to be aware of, Dr. Fox's comment that you could progress into the ambulance service is not necessarily the case. It could be the case, but that would have to be worked out with Cumberland County, because by that TCA code, part of that says that the county cannot respond to any ambulances inside the city without an agreement. Now, here, here is the complication for all of that. A primary emergency provider is not constrained by state EMS rule to make any non-emergency transports. So your transfers out of your hospital, your dialysis patients, your discharges, all of your scheduled doctor's visits, those things that currently Cumberland County EMS is taking care of, within the City of Crossville, somebody would have to determine who's going to make those transports. The county is not, by state rule, responsible for that. The City of Crossville, by state rule, would not be responsible for that. Other municipalities who have applied for and obtained primary emergency provider licenses have a great advantage that currently the City of Crossville, Cumberland County, does not have. They have a multitude of private ambulance companies that take care of those. So county, city needs to come together before you make these decisions, because I'm glad I'm not your financial officer tonight, but all of those agreements will have a big impact on what it's going to cost the City of Crossville to operate an ambulance service. If you apply for an ambulance license and become the primary emergency provider for the City of Crossville, and Cumberland County says, okay, we're not going to make any transports inside the city, you have a lot more transports somebody's got to take care of than if they agree to transport part of those patients. Sir?
Yes, Mr. Thompson, are you saying that if, if it was a city EMS and a county EMS, if city EMS needed the county for a mutual aid, they, they wouldn't have to come?
You would have to have that agreement.
A mutual aid agreement?
You would have to have that agreement, by, by TCA, that 7-61-102.
Is that written?
You would have to have an agreement with the county to provide any ambulance services within the city. That's something that simply needs to be worked out on the front end before you make any decisions.
So you're saying before, yeah, make sure that.
Yeah, you, you simply need to find out who's going to cover what.
And you brought up the transport thing, I know that's been thrown around, and I, everyone, honestly, I'm like you, I'm new to this, is that when I talked to Randy Davis at the hospital, he says, there's no signed agreement. We go with the.
And, and state rule does not. If Cumberland County EMS chose to never take another hot, a transfer out of the hospital, there is no state rule that says they have to do that. They could stop doing that tonight, and there is nothing by state EMS rule that would constrain them to do that. Now, we all know they have social, political, moral obligations to that, but state EMS rule plainly says they may provide that, and that would be true for the City of Crossville as well, with that type of license.
So we would have to figure out if we were going to do that or not?
Yeah, so the, the, the second type of license that you could apply for is a licensed ambulance transport services. Per the discussion held here tonight, the problem that seems to be at the forefront of this is that a category B licensed ambulance service does not have oversight, medical oversight, over first responder services. That would still be through Cumberland County EMS as the primary 911 provider.
Any questions? Do you have a comment?
I did. The, thank you for making the point about the inter-hospital transfers, the Tennessee Health Facilities, Healthcare Facilities Commission, excuse me, James gave me a water, I was hearing, I'm about to choke on it. They may, they, they make it pretty clear that it's actually the responsibility of the transferring and the receiving hospital to make sure that that arrangement, the transfer goes, hence some hospitals will hire one of their own ambulances. I think Covenant does that in East Tennessee, they have their own ambulance that moves people from Clayburn County to Knoxville hospitals and back and forth. So, but now, just to, like Turner's point, when you're. So, but now, just to Mike Turner's point, when you're talking about an agreement for the county units to come into the city, you're talking about that separate apart from just statewide mutual aid agreement, where everybody.
Yes, yes, I, I, I can read for you the.
Oh, no, I just.
The law, if you need me to clarify. I'm, I'm simply saying.
Yeah.
That as this council goes forward in the decision-making process in front of you, those questions need to be asked ahead of time because those options that your finance director laid out are gonna be much different based upon, okay, we're gonna buy one ambulance to make some transports versus the county saying, listen, you take care of everything inside the city of Crossville, and we'll take care of it. That, there's gonna be a huge difference, though, you're talking about the difference between buying one or two ambulances and buying four, five, six ambulances, and staffing them, of course, and equipping those, those ambulances.
One last question I have, if, just to give us a timeframe of the certification, the inspection process, if there was an ambulance sitting here today that meets state specs and you came to inspect it, what's the application process?
Ninety days.
Ninety day, okay, good to know, good to know.
You, you, you make application, uh, that, there are some groundwork that, uh, needs to be laid before that, uh, but that has to be done before you make application. You make application, we come out, do an initial review, uh, to make sure that the very basic documents are here, liability insurance, mechanical inspections, you have to get your markings approved on your ambulances, uh, some of those minor things, you have to have a medical director in place, of course, protocols, um, and you can actually begin to operate, then ninety days later, we come back and do a ninety-day audit.
Got it.
Uh, and listen, uh, city of Crossville chooses to go forward with an ambulance service, state Tennessee will help every way we can to facilitate that. Uh, when I start talking about initial reviews and, and ninety-day audits, uh, i- if we ca- if we come and you have one document out of sort, or you don't have everything together, uh, we educate before we regulate, it's not just, uh, you know, you're, you're done, but we would work with whoever the director of your ambulance service is to make sure that those things get corrected, rather than just saying, no, you can't have your ambulance service.
Since I have you, I know it's getting late, but then I don't wanna put you on the spot, so feel free.
I'm kinda jealous Dr. Fox got a Warther's, to be honest with you.
I did, and it helped a lot.
So, I know some of the frustration that I've heard from at least some of the councilors, I don't wanna speak for y'all if that's an issue, but this BLS truck.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this abandonment conversation and whatever else, it seems like what I'm hearing is that there, there's a gray area, or, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to figure out why we got one group saying that it's abandoned, the other group says it's not. I'm just trying to figure out from your perspective as the state consultant, right? So you report back to the state EMS guy, right? So walk me through this, because I think there's been some misconceptions.
So, so to answer Mr. Turner's question, there is no hard state rule that says that. That is primarily a local matter as to how you want to run your EMS agency, and by all means currently, that is controlled by the medical director for Cumberland County EMS, how he wants that to be done. Um, now, he- here is what's problematic. A basic EMT transporting a patient to the hospital, doing something for that patient, is preferred over a critical care paramedic that is simply standing looking over a patient. Does that make sense? So Dr. Fox is a well-respected, very experienced physician, but if I fall out on the floor and he does nothing but stand and look over me, his physician license really don't do me any good, so I would much prefer a basic EMT go ahead and transport me to the hospital. That is the problem you all have had in times past. Uh, a paramedic asking a BLS unit to stay on scene simply because they're a paramedic, uh, that is a violation of your memorandum of understanding, and it is a known violation of your memorandum of understanding, and thus the city would be liable. Dr. Fox has already made it a very plain point, when somebody is assessed, we have no idea what they're gonna be assessed five minutes from now. Um, we tried to address this with Chief South, um, and, um, he told me that you all had another consultant that you were consulting. Um, and, uh, I, I want you to understand, the EMS rules that are in place are in place, first of all, to protect the public, second of all, to protect the responders. So these MOUs that are in place in their current state are there to help protect your paramedics, EMTs that are responding, to ensure that they have liability insurance, that they're, to ensure they have medical direction. Um, if they're not following the medical direction that they have been given, then that is a violation of your memorandum of understanding. There again, that is a local matter that this council, Chief South, and Cumberland County EMS, and the Cumberland County legislative body need to work out. That is not a state matter. Um, and the last conversation that I had with Chief South, uh, Dr. Wojcik about that, tried to make it very plain that it was a local matter that needed to be worked out locally. How you all want to handle those situations is gonna be up to you. Um, but it's plain in state rule that the medical director for the local primary nine-one-one provider makes those decisions. Nobody can do anything in EMS without a medical director. It is well within the purview of a medical director of an ambulance service to tell a paramedic they cannot intubate, if that's what they choose to do. Now, there may be ramifications for that, but as a licensed EMS provider, I can operate the scope of practice, but I'm taking all that liability upon myself unless I have a medical director that has given me standing orders and protocols in order to operate under, and then give me leeway to make decisions upon my own.
Alright.
I think probably in no uncertain terms, that may get down to the root of the problem here.
Well, thank you. Any questions, comments? If we were to, uh, need to send you questions through our city manager, would you be helpful in answering?
I, I will answer any questions that I can. Um, I, I encourage this council, um, to take a look at your memorandum of understanding with the county. Um, if there needs to be changes made, um, we very much don't, I mean, we, we'll do anything we can to help get these things alleviated, um, a- and to ensure that your people are taken care of, but your providers are taken care of as well. That, that is our, that is our desire.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you coming. Alright, well now, that was taken care of four, uh, five, six, what, what, do we need to keep all these, or can we push them, or do you want to, is there discussion on those at all? I think you, you pretty much answered everything regarding the budget, it's, it's more about if there's any other questions from council, correct, at this time?
What was t- what was ten? What's that one?
Uh, I think, I think, uh, I think Councilman Fox had put on, uh, did you put on?
Yeah.
Seven, eight, nine, and ten?
I did.
And eleven?
I did.
Twelve?
Well, those are moved right now.
Okay, you're moving those and then we'll talk about them?
Sure.
You kept moving them where?
My thoughts are, is that we can just move them to next month for further conversation, or we can move it to where it's gonna be discussed in a retreat, now that we made the motion, so we'll have to push back.
So I'm sorry, I think item seven of this, the funding for fire station one and two, which still needs to occur.
And six.
And six, okay.
So what, so what we'll do is, but five, uh, five, uh, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve at this point, can, can we go ahead and remove those? And, uh, my thoughts are, let's move them out to next month, anything that we talk about.
Next month's, uh, work session?
No, yeah.
Can I get just a little bit on ten? I mean, tease me a little bit here, what the?
That's, uh, that's you, isn't it?
Oh, it was, I, of course, I didn't know Mr. Tompkins was gonna be here. Had this gone through, I was gonna ask our city attorney to help us get the, uh, certificate of license application started, when you obviously work through a consultant with that, so that's.
Got it. I'm with you, I'm with you, Mark.
Alright, so then, that's, that's, that leaves us with six and seven, correct? Okay, um, shows yours.
So item six is a reversal resolution for EMS, ambulances and equipment, if we were to proceed with some sort of loan or bond issuance to purchase those, if we spent money before that occurred, this resolution allows us to re, to get those out-of-pocket expenses back out of the proceeds, we're not just wasting that money.
So we'd have to potentially vote on this and pass this if the referendum passes at this point?
Yeah, you would need to do that before we did, and kind of.
Okay, okay.
Uh, item seven is the financing for fire stations one and two. Um, I have, uh, gotten information from, uh, Commonwealth Securities in the Tennessee Bond Fund. Uh, I've analyzed both of those. Um, a- as it stands, um, I think the, the Tennessee Bond Fund at this point would be a better choice, and my reasons are this, their interest rate is a little higher, but their fees are a lot lower. Over the course of the financing, the, the difference in fees would not be made up, it would still be more expensive to use, uh, like Commonwealth Securities to do this because of fund, doing the S and P rating, uh, because municipal bond advisor fee is higher, things like that. So we're looking at about four-point-seven million, so on this, on this amount, given the difference in fees, we will not make up the difference in interest rate unless it was significantly lower. Uh, the, the one thing with the Tennessee Bond Fund is, uh, they, this year, I was informed today, they have been what they call a heightened risk kind of, uh, bond issuance, and that's because in five years, the rate can change, and, or, and/or they can say, we wanna go ahead and get paid now. With some of the stuff I know that's happening and things we're looking at in the next several years, I'm hoping to maybe, in the next five years, maybe refinance anyway, so I don't see that as being an issue at this time. They do have to give us notice of a hundred, and I think a hundred-and-eighty-five days if they're not gonna renew it for the subsequent term, or I think it's ninety days if the rate's gonna change. So there are some notification issues in there, uh, but due to the, some of the stuff that I think would be upcoming, uh, that's what I'm seeing, I, I'd rather, my recommendation would be use the bond fund, uh, the difference in cost would actually be cheaper, especially for the time period that I'm hoping we can do this for. Uh, it also would be approved quicker, I believe, than it would be to go through a full bond issuance, and we need to get this done just when we start the renovations on station one, since we have trucks coming, ho- hopefully sooner than what they said. Do you know, have a timeframe on that, chief?
Just deal over, okay, things, I'm like.
Okay, so we need to try to get those modifications done to fit the new fire apparatuses, is my understanding, so.
So what's the timeline on, we have to make a decision on, on funding this thing or financing this?
Um, the rate that they've given me is good for sixty days. I will say, the rate they gave me, I got one from them about thirty, forty days ago, when I started looking at all this, it hasn't went down since then because rates are starting to drop. They're anticipating more rate reductions on a federal level, the Federal Reserve in November and December, so those rates may even drop lower, um, I'm not sure. Um, but right now, the, the rate, uh, it dropped only like a tenth of pers- uh, hundredth of percent, so not much, but I think if rates start dropping again, things may change, but I can't predict five years, but I think due to the, the cost savings on the actual issuance costs will not be made up in the difference in interest rate.
Okay. Questions from council? What do y'all wanna do? Do we refund it a month? Do we make the decision now? I think it's, can we wait next month?
That's fine, like I said, the rate's good for sixty days. I got that.
Out of six, eight, seven, or just seven?
Uh, s- six, that resolution won't happen unless the referendum passes, but it's good to know.
Alright, thank you, council.
Alright, so.
Fire station one's still a million, four or five, a million, four-fifty?
That's the projected amount, it may go down, I think they've said they might be able to cut some cost off of there.
Yeah, we think we can do it for a million.
But we've also got to think, we've got fire station two, we still have some, several items there that we need to add to that furnishing, I mean, there's a lot, and, and the way we were doing this gave us the ability to use that for also, if we need to use it for a road or something like that. So there's some language, especially in what we're doing, that if we don't need it all for that, there is some ability to use it for some, something else if should be needed.
And you got two or three trucks coming?
Three.
Three? They can, we gonna do those?
Well, they broke, so we're gonna have to, they're, they're away. Cause, they're, they're, like you said, not, they're, they're like.
Okay, alright, so we'll move the, action item number seven to November.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and then that takes care of, so eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, those all can be removed at this time. We'll go down, thirteen and fourteen have been moved up, done with, let's go to fifteen, discussion regarding twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six alcohol enforcement grant contract. Bailey, are you and I on the same page?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Is this you again?
Nobody.
Did you?
I can handle it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It is a grant for alcohol enforcement, it's a forty-thousand-dollar grant annual, annually that we receive from the state, to cover overtime. There's no match required.
Okay.
And staff recommends approval.
Sounds good, y'all good with that? We'll add that to the agenda?
I would think so.
Alright, it's number sixteen, a discussion regarding approval of sewer mainline extension.
This is a recommendation from the planning commission to accept approval. It's a sewer line on Iris Lane, on the corner of Genesis and Iris Lane. Um, the, it's a private water and sewer line proposed, with the water being on a master meter, and it does require a mainline extension for that.
Did pass planning commission? Do you wanna say anything about it? No, pretty button dry, we'll add it to the agenda.
Yep.
Alright, sixteen's added, number seventeen, discussion regarding approval of contract with Vermont Systems.
This is new scheduling system for Parks and Rec, and, um, it's a three-year contract. First year will be twenty-three thousand dollars, second year will be thirteen thousand dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Is this, uh, is this in the budget, or is it gonna require?
Yes, it's budgeted.
Okay, so it's budgeted, staff recommends, any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll add that on to the agenda. Number eighteen, discussion regarding approval of tourism enhancement grant contract.
Congratulations, we received a tourism enhancement grant in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, so this is approval of the contract, and, um, we will have to provide a match of approximately sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Can you let council know with this? We've been, I hate to say, we've been getting a lot of grants, so.
This is the way finding signage that we applied for, probably last month, they had a very quick turnaround, so we've already been notified that we received a grant.
And UCDD did that for us?
Yes.
Yeah, been great, y'all fine with adding that?
Actually, no. Staff did that.
Oh, even better.
Yeah.
I gave her a chance, I gave her a chance, you did that?
Well, we did.
We did.
The dynamic duo, well, good. Alright, number nineteen, discussion regarding, add that, uh, the discussion regarding approval of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six lease of Catusa Utility Department building.
This is the annual agreement that we, um, signed with Catusa for rental of the building, it's on a month-to-month at this point because of the new facility being constructed, but it did go up a hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Hmm, okay. Add that to the agenda, any, council, anything else they would like to discuss, put on the agenda? Okay, that brings us to the end of it, thank you all for hanging.
Thank you.